The board members have all received copies of our minutes from our last meeting of January twenty seventh. Please take a moment to review them. There's one correction that is noted Bill Carr is noted as present and he was not in attendance. We will make that appropriate correction. Is there anything else at this point?
Now I'll move to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second Tracy, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, and the meeting has been approved. Okay, we'll move to just be just so the audience knows how our process is going to work since we didn't have any community members, we are going to read through each individual case. The board is going to engage in questions with the applicant. Then we're going to, when we're done examining the case, then we were going to turn to the general public for their comments. Kim will read off people's names individually who have pre-registered for comment. And then she'll indicate when you're unmuted and then we'll we'll have a discussion with with the general public at that time. So I just want to set the stage how we're going to do this, but every we will get to everyone's comments. Trust us. We're here all night long if we have to be. It's no different than our public meetings. We will conduct the Zoom meeting in the same format. And open opportunity for conversation. So our first order of business tonight is forty Taft Avenue. Take notice that the Town of Colony zoning board of appeals will hold a televised hearing on the third of February twenty twenty one at seven P M. To hear the appeal of Ted DeLucia from the decision of the building department manager for the town of Colony. Denying him a building permit for the premises located at forty Taft Avenue. The proposed construction of a one thousand seven hundred plus or minus square foot, single family dwelling. On a four thousand four hundred and nineteen plus or minus square foot lot with a fifteen foot front yard setback. Is not compliant with the twelve thousand plus or minus square foot minimum lot size. Minimum lot size thirty minimum front yard setback required in a single family residential zoning district. As stated in the Town of Colony land use law, Article six, sections one ninety dash twenty four, one ninety dash twenty six, I do apologize for that. Sub A and one ninety attachment number three dimensional table for prior established lots. Upon the request for variance from provisions of the code of the Town of Colony, chapter one ninety to permit such construction and use. And a secret determination for such appeal. To protect the public safety during the state of emergency triggered by COVID nineteen, this public hearing will take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman during the hearing. As a member of the public wishes to listen and view this meeting, please visit the town's YouTube channel using a link that is online. We have the affidavit of publication on record and there is no additional seeker information we need to review at this time. Ted, are you here?
Yes, Mr. Cam.
Why don't you give us an overview of what you're proposing this time for forty test?
Yes, thank you very much to yourself and the board members. I appreciate the opportunity to finally get in front of the board and in a different fashion, but I know it's going to be just as productive and if it's okay with the board, I'd like to read to you points of interest that I provided. Because I know we were in front of this board in two thousand and eighteen for variance for the same parcel. We have made some significant changes and there may be a one or two board members that obviously weren't there for that meeting and sometime has passed. So if you can bear with me, I'd like to just read through what I've written and I believe you all have a copy. As you referenced, this property, it falls within a single family residential zoning district. It is a vacant lot within the nineteen eleven subdivision known as Colony Terrace subdivision. It's remained that way ever since it was established. This subdivision is obviously comprises hundreds of parcels. All were generated at a very small size of typically thirty feet width. Several of them were purchased as multiple lots or two and a half lots or so forth to create so many different sized lots within this large subdivision. And our sub lot here in question is a very similar example of that. When we were in front of the board in two thousand and eighteen, we were seeking approval to build on this parcel. We also were requiring a reduction on the front yard setbacks as well as the lot size. Our previous appeal was for the home to face overlook. It was a raised ranch significantly larger than this one. We felt the basically the appeal of the house would have been better that way because we did have an interested buyer that wanted it done that way, if you will. That house was much larger. It was three bedrooms, two and a half baths comprised over on twenty one hundred square feet. As a result of that process that we went through with the board. We obviously, there was a lot of friction from the neighbors. They were dissatisfied with many of the items that we were presenting to the board based on our appeal. They felt the home was too large, the lot size was not adequate for the house, too small, it didn't, the style of the home didn't fit within the neighborhood. And that we were adding more of a traffic issue with the neighborhood, if you will. So obviously that contributed in our opinion to not getting a positive response and you know, being familiar with the board and 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 how I know what I know about the zoning laws and so forth. You know, I I took that serious and we tabled this and obviously it's been quite some time since we were back in front of you with a better appeal, in my opinion. And it gave us an opportunity to move forward on a house that we were granted by the board. I believe it might have been the same night on thirty eight Grapevine, which we felt turned out very well. We've done other variances within this neighborhood and were successful and the products held up very well without any complaints or future problems, which I'll address later on. So therefore, since that decision was made, we did listen to the concerns. And we feel that this is a better proposal to mitigate the neighbors' concerns as well as the board. We greatly reduced the house size by a third. It's now sixteen hundred square feet. Five hundred square foot less than the former house. We're now facing, as you see by the sight plane here, we're facing the home towards Taft Avenue. Which doesn't have the elevation issue that it had on overlook. The driveway is the furthest away from the corner as can be feasibly possible. It will also be a double wide driveway that will accommodate a lot of off-street parking. We are asking for a fifteen foot front yard setback, but where the garage is placed, it's placed another sixty backs. You know, it's over twenty and pavement in this area because of such a wide easement and right of way is another ten feet out. So we really have thirty foot of driveway from the edge of pavement of Taft to the garage and it will be double wide. So it's ample. We have a garage, so we feel there's plenty of off-street parking, very similar to the house that we built on thirty eight. Grapevine, which is just on the other corner, which I can show you a photograph in a little bit. So we have reduced the footprint, so we have seventy nine percent of area, if you will, left on this parcel after we placed the house. So that's considerable amount of area that it still remains vacant, if you will, or yard space. As I said, with the revised placement moves the home further away from ninety eight overlook, which would be the basically the rear yard of this house now, which that property owner was concerned about the close proximity, so we did pull the house further away from that neighbor. We're also proposing to set the house back further from Taft, as I already mentioned. When we did canvass the neighborhood, obviously many properties do not have ample parking or driveway width, if you will, to accommodate off-street parking. That that we feel that's very, very important and we're aware of that. Also, the question was raised from the previous hearing about the increased traffic hazards and so forth. But we did solicit the town more than once, police department records, and there really is nothing here that stands out to be more of a hazardous situation than any other neighborhood that the town deals with. You know, obviously it's it's near a corner, we know that, but many homes are near a corner and I can show you others that are so much closer. We're proposing a front yard setback that either meets or exceeds the current front yard setbacks of the neighborhood. We know we violate what the current zoning laws. But when we have to take in consideration, what does this neighborhood consist of and what's existing, we're we're very much current with it. In fact, we are better, much better than a lot. For example, on the survey that you see right there, the existing dwelling next to ours, which is, I believe, thirty six Taft. The front yard of that house from the porch is this, by survey, I think it was five feet at best, might be four off the front property line. The other one on the under very corner, great directly across, that's about eight foot from the front property. So we we meet. You know, we are exceeding what conditions are in this neighborhood. And I know we don't comply with the current grandfather provision, but basically a huge percentage of this subdivision does not as well. We're proposing a reduction of lot size under the current zoning requirement. This is not unordinary due to the fact that this entire subdivision properties are different sizes. I mean seventy five percent or more of this subdivision doesn't comply with the current existing grandfather provisions. And quite frankly, we are basically following suit on what the comprehensive plan suggests to do. With these older communities is if there's parcels within the communities that can be developed. It's a low cost, modest home. I mean, this home will be under three hundred thousand, which I know that seems a lot, but in today's standards for a new home. If you're looking at a brand new home like two hundred and sixty grand or, I mean, that's what this will be offered at. We sold the other house on the other corner by the same builder before it even got framed. And it was to a local person in the neighborhood's family member. They liked the neighborhood. That's really what the comprehensive plan is telling us. That if we can keep these neighborhoods established and basically keep them moving forward and it it works and and there was a perfect example. And I know the board is very familiar with this and I I apologize if I'm preaching to the choir, but I just feel that I need to really almost go over every item because I know last time we did this variance, it got a lot of dissatisfaction and things sometimes I think it lose we lose basically focus on the facts and I know no one wants a house built next to them. I I hundred percent understand that. I sympathize with that, but we have, I believe, a right to the property owner. That he has the right, what do we do with this property? If we don't build it with a house, there's nothing we can do. You you can't get a used variance to build a garage. That's a used variance. You can't do anything on the land. You can't put a shed. You can't put a garage. You can't. You can't store cars on it. So we have an ability to do the right thing, you know what I mean? But maybe because it's the lot size, we're trying to see what really would fit. I think that's really what the discussion needs to focus on. Excuse me. I know there's only so many things that I could prepare and and put in front of you because I actually requested experience, I think it was in November. So I have other information that I thought I could show and I would hopefully maybe you can hold some of it up. If it's visual, that I think you also have a copy of the subdivision. I don't know if you can see it here, but I know I provided this for the members, which really X out how many lots within this, I think it's a hundred or a hundred fifty lot subdivision, that actually are very close to the size that we have. And I think I counted the seventy or eighty, which are developed. There's a couple that aren't developed, but most of this subdivision is developed. So that's something I know, I believe I forwarded to you in half. You did show, I think, just a few seconds ago, was the elevation of the house that we're intending to build. Again, it's very narrow. It's about twenty four to twenty six feet high. I listened to what the community said. I mean, this is definitely more in in common with what's in the community, although this is a vast neighborhood. We have everything in this neighborhood from little ranches, bungalows, raised ranches, colonial homes. I mean, it's really the perfect example of a neighborhood, I mean, a big neighborhood, that has multiple, multiple different styles and sizes of homes. And we realize this is a small lot. The first floor plan is very modest. I think you have that, but for sake of argument, I'm showing it to you. It's one car garage. It has an apple living room and dining room and kitchen with a washer and dryer and a half of that, which is very typical. And the upstairs is just fairly typical, three bedroom. Not very large, but really it meets the needs of a young family, you know, that would be our our customer. I mean, it it just happens. We've seen it many times. And I and I know the board has been a part of that with other small lots that we've done throughout the town. Once again, I want to show for illustration that this was, this was, if you can see it fairly well, this was our original proposal of a raised ranch that faced overlook. You know, we realized it was a lot wider, a lot longer. It did impact closer to the neighbors' properties. And it did exit onto overlook. So as I said, we changed that. And then this one, of course, is what you've seen, but it's a little bit more colorful possibly. It makes a little more sense, maybe. How we have changed it, we're exiting on Taft, much smaller footprint. It's just, it just fits. It just fits much better. Again, this is the neighbor's house, which I already showed or mentioned to you on that survey that we're about two foot or three foot off the front property line. And just because I know this has been brought up before and please bear with me. I mean, this is thirty seven Taft, which is just across the street from us. Which is about eight foot off the front property line on a very tight corner. I mean, I have many examples of Arcadia Avenue. I mean, super close to the corner. I'm sure the board members have been through there. Please, I don't want to bore you, but you know, it's important to my client that we show that it's not uncommon, but these houses are two to like six feet off the front property lines. And these are dangerous, in my opinion. Ours will not be. I'll show you. Now, this was thirty eight Grapevine, which the board granted to us. I believe it might have been in the same night that we that's the house that we built just on the other corner. Thirty eight Grapevine. This house has the same setbacks as we're asking for with regards to forty Taft. If we recall, this whole corner had a bunch of hedges that really blocked the corner and those were all removed. Obviously, that was a condition of variance, which we actually wanted to do anyway. This is the one that the neighbor down the street, their relative, saw it being built, why it was being framed and came and actually bought the house. They love the neighborhood and that's part of what our comprehensive plan is telling us that, you know, let's keep these older neighborhoods vibrant. And and as you can see here, that's the corner. So the visibility is, it's not reduced by a fifteen foot setback. It's it because, you know, fifteen foot is to the property line. And when we talk about what's left between the property and pavement or right of way, there usually is ten feet or fifteen, whatever the case may be. So it does provide quite a bit of area. And this, I know this shot is a little dark, I'm sorry, but this shows the garage with the double wide driveway with the ample parking on the side. See, there's one car there. Maybe it didn't come through too good. But it provides, you know, a large area for off-street parking. That that's, that's because this kind of thing is happening in the neighborhood. I mean, and it will fall to the people that park there. I mean, they don't have the space. They, some of them don't have driveways. But this is right on Grapevine. I mean, this is and and just about any given day. That's, that's my opinion. That's where the problem is. That's where we have traffic issues. And you know, people have company over. Well, if they don't have a driveway, where else can they go? We understand that, but we're providing the the space for it. Please bear with me. I won't be much longer, but again, because the point was brought up that that other house didn't fit within this community. This this is a house right on Grapevine. I mean, it's a two-story house, very similar sized lot. This is right on Grapevine as well. I mean, within sight distance of what we're building. Just to show the board, and I'm sure you've traveled the area, this is right on Taft, just just down the street from where we are. Once again, not to beat this up, but these are two houses right, right down the street on Taft. So our house is obviously in liking with with that neighborhood that exists. This again was the former house that we wanted to build, the raised ranch, which is very typical. Sure, you guys seen it many, many times. This was forty four feet wide. And now we're looking to you know, do this one here if possible, and this one is only twenty six feet wide. And if you look at that elevation, it's it's very, very close with the photographs I just showed you that were within very, very close proximity on same size lots, pretty close to what we had. And I know there was drainage concerns brought up at at many meetings without in the during zoning board hearings throughout everywhere in town and in special in conditions with the one that we did here with regard to our lot before on forty as well as thirty eight Taft. I believe you have a copy of a letter that I actually, I questioned the stormwater management department who handles water, who handles all our all our stormwater management issues and when we put a design in to build the house. And I'll read to you what the senior public works operation technician said when my request was when we built thirty eight Grapevine place, was there any future problems? The house has been there going on two years. And they said, I received your letter in October of two thousand and twenty regarding if there was any drainage concerns with thirty eight Grapevine. We feel in the following, and here's the following response. We feel confident that development of proposed building lot has has not had any negative drainage impact on any of this property. This is based on a review of the stormwater management field operations during the construction. We feel confident that the similar approaches taken would develop a forty Taft Avenue, that it can be developed without creating any drainage issues, so on and so forth. I mean, this is the same engineer that we use, the same design. The law says we we have to capture all water on property. We do that. I mean, we've done this so many times in the town. We can't create problems to the town nor the neighbors. And what's ironic about this letter too, is this is written by the senior technician of the town, John Desile, who actually lives in this neighborhood. He's been living in this neighborhood for for twenty five years, so he's very, very familiar with the characteristics of this neighborhood. And if and if the board doesn't mind, I just wanted to mention one other thing and I'll I'll be quiet after that. And I know I mentioned the comprehensive plan, which I think is very important because it sets kind of guidelines, like where are we going to go? What what are we trying to do with these older neighborhoods? We're talking tonight about an area variance. Yes, it's all about numbers. How big is the lot? What does the law say you can have? And what's grandfathered? In nineteen fifty something, and I'm sure I see that there's building officials there, they can give me the right year, but I think in the fifties when zoning started in town. Set the size of lots for a residential home of six thousand square foot. Then later in life, okay, and I know they're all younger than me, but later in life, the 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 numbers went up. And in in the early seventies, it went up to twelve thousand square foot. Then in the nineties, it went up in because we had multiple zones for the single family. We had A one, A two, A three, we had several zoning districts. It went up to like twenty four thousand square foot. And A zones, I think, were slightly larger. Well, then they realized making lots so big, the cost to do this, the development cost, the housing cost, it's going out of sight. So now the trend, you see it all over. It's happening in our community and the capital district and many, many places is downsizing lots, getting smaller, we're allowing condos, which we've never had condos in in our area for, I mean, many, many, many years. So then they said, well, we're going to go backwards. We're going to make only one district, single family residential, it's like just one for homes, and we're going to make it eighteen thousand square foot. And that what we're going to do is we're going to grandfather in twelve thousand square foot lots. So if you have a twelve thousand square, we got to set a standard somewhere. However, the law says if you have a house on a way on an underside lot already developed, there is no lot size. We're going to just allow you to build or add on to your house to the setbacks of standards back in the seventies, which makes sense. And that's what really the comprehensive plan leans on. It says, you know, I'll read what it says if you just bear with me and I promise I'll be done. It provides opportunities and incentives for development and redevelopment for housings within diverse municipalities, excuse me, diverse subdivisions. In particular, the trend towards smaller household sizes and increasing this need is to be affordable. So it says the housing means Colony is to develop in these older subdivisions, housing within range and types for basically the future residents to live in the community. It also states that many neighborhoods are relatively new. However, there are several older neighborhoods, established neighborhoods that represent some of the first suburban neighborhoods in the region. Making sure that these first tier suburban neighborhoods remain stable and vital is to allow development within these communities and be affordable housing for young families. That's exactly what we did. We built that house on thirty eight. We, it was a low, lower cost house for brand new, if you will. And a neighbor from down the street, cousin bought it that loved the neighborhood because they've been there so much. So I I'll just open it up to the board. I know there'll be questions. I know there'll be opposition, but I appreciate the time.
Ted, thank you very much. That was a very comprehensive overview of the forty Taft Avenue. Let's start with Kirk. We'll start at the other end of the table tonight. Kirk, you want to lead us off?
Okay, just just one question. So so Ted, is the owner going to plan to live in the new house if it's get built?
No, we actually have a potential buyer that is, you know, obviously excited for this sized house. Just like we had for the other ones, sir, the raised ranch, but that one didn't happen, but they were very happy, you know, to to move on to another house. And actually, I neglected to say it really has not too much bearing on this, but the board approved two variances on twelve and fourteen Monroe Avenue. That was fifteen thousand square foot lot two years ago to re actually split the lot, which was an existing grandfather approved lot. The board approved it to split it into two smaller seven thousand square foot lots. Which was kind of interesting, I thought, set of presidents, but I think it's great because the neighborhood is small. And my client bought those lots as well and and that customer is moving over to that. But no, we have an interested person that definitely wants this house. They love the little house. They love the design.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure. Nick? Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask one quick question before I hear from audience. So Ted, you submitted this with eighty two, you know, some lots that are similar in size. When you say similar in size, do you know of any on that list of eighty two that are actually smaller than the forty four nineteen square feet, square footage?
No, Nick, there is, there is none that are smaller. There are about, I I believe there was at least ten or ten in that neighborhood or ten or so that were as as our size, if you will. Forty five hundred. Mostly the other ones were between five and like seven thousand. But there again, you know, houses were a little bit bigger. The house that we're putting on is only using I believe I already mentioned it, we're saving seventy two percent of the area for it. So that means we're only using about thirteen percent of the footprint of the property.
Okay.
Typically twenty percent, not to interrupt you Nick, but typically twenty percent to thirty percent is the average on small lots to utilize the area for the home. We're we're under that.
Okay, thank you. Jim, I'll wait for
Okay.
Audience. Thank you.
Great, Tracy?
Ted, appreciate it.
Um, I have a question for the um, building department. So. Do we know how many times uh, the zoning board has approved lots that are smaller than, let's say, five thousand or forty-five hundred square feet?
I checked. I didn't find any in the last several years because one of the other members had asked that question. Usually they're around five thousand square feet or so. I, I have not seen any that were under five thousand. I'm sure in the past, in the past fifty years, there's been a few, but in the past five years, there have not been many. If not, I, I, I think zero. It could, there could be one that has snuck through, but I think zero.
Yeah, I um, just to interrupt a second, um, I did one on um, Van Hugheson. Um, it was a while back though, Joe. You're absolutely correct. Um, and I have it here, but I'm sorry, I don't have the number of the lot, but anyway, I have it right here. It was a um.
What number Van Houston was that Ted?
Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. I, I thought I wrote it on here, but I have it right here. It was this house we did. Uh, it's, I believe, well, I know it's in the thirty block. It's like thirty something. This is a, this is a forty-four hundred square foot lot. So you'll see the house though, I mean, for sake of argument. I mean, it's quite similar to ours. They opted out to do a garage. They did a garage actually in the back of this house, which I thought was kinda, you'll see right here, there's a site. I don't know if you can see it, but uh, you'll see right there, it was forty foot wide. That was the house, the big block. And that was the garage in the back. But that was like in the thirty block, so it might be twenty-eight or in that area, but um, no, you, you're right. There was um, most of them around that forty-eight hundred to five thousand and.
Thank you Ted. Tracy?
Um, I think that's all I have for now until we hear from the, from the audience.
All right, Mary?
I have no questions. I'd like to hear from the audience also.
Okay, David?
Hi, sorry, it was a few minutes late. I had trouble getting on. Um, at the previous meeting, I wanna compliment Ted on making a sincere effort to contact the neighbors and doing a lot of what they asked him to do to help alleviate the addition on here. Um. Question is you, you, to Ted, do you anticipate the remedies you tried to take will alleviate the drainage issues?
Well, absolutely, Dave. Uh, I mean, I'm not a drainage engineer, but I've been around it enough. And I know the, the building department is here to listen to this, so that, you know, I can only speak the truth. Uh, we use Nick Costa, advanced engineering, doesn't really matter, but he's so well versed in the town of Collin. I'm sure he was in front of you board many, many times. Uh, we do, the system has to work. It's, we won't get through the town process unless we prove through drainage reports, perk tests, and all of that, that it, water can't go off the property. Um, we did the perk test on thirty-eight even before we had the zoning board meeting and we got the reports done, which is kinda not typically spend four thousand dollars if you're not sure if you're gonna get a variance. But I know the, the neighbors were concerned and they have a right to be. I, I, I know what complaints are. I've listened to them for many, many years. It's not good. Um, but we did thirty-eight. We did uh, eleven Grapevine. You know, we're doing Monroe down the street, all the same engineering company, all, and they all have to be approved. And as I said, I got the letter from John Desile, the senior and uh, design guy with the town who reviews these records. He has no complaints with thirty-eight Grapevine, no problems with the water going anywhere. The perkability was good. This lot has less of a topograph, a topo issue. It only has four foot, excuse me, five foot of elevation drop from, from um, thirty-eight lot thirty-eight, I think it's called thirty-eight overlook to Grapevine. The other house, the other lot had about eleven or twelve foot drop. So you know what that means? The water wants to shed. This is even better. Um. So there will not be a drainage issue. There cannot be a drainage issue.
Has there ever been any thoughts about doing either cutting swales to run it? I remember at my house when I owned a home in Latham, we had issues with water runoff from the house. We cut swales to take it away or to drain it underground to carry it and dig and, which is a lot of money, to dig it and put it underground?
Yeah, oh yeah, Mr. Rosenthal. That's what I'm saying.
My Dave, please.
Dave, this costs, this costs, this costs four or five or it, it could be ten thousand dollars. There, there, everything is done. I mean, we have to put what they call cold tech systems in, or we have to, we don't have um, uh, retention basins. They're not really permitted for residential. You still see those in the big communities, if you will, where the water lays in an area that's not permitted in, in a residential single home. You have to use either a cold tech system, all underground infiltration systems, chambers that will take the water, hold the water for a period of time, could be weeks or whatever, raises to a level and then dissipates out into the town approved storm source. We cannot pipe it directly. Uh, there will be swales, yes. There will be berms, if you will. Uh, to take sometimes the rain gutters, you know what I mean, that come down off a house? But not to hold water like so it just sits on the ground. It has to perk. It has to go into a chamber or something that the, the engineer designed. So each site could run between, you know, five or eight or ten thousand or twelve thousand dollars to do a drainage system. Because it's, you don't get the ticket to build or building permit as, I'm sure Joe and both Don, I see that now here. They know that. It just doesn't happen. It's gotta go through the property.
All right. Well, I, I appreciate at least that you looked into all that and I realize it's gonna be cost prohibitive, but I just thought I'd ask.
Yes.
Thank you, David. Michael, anything at this time or do you wanna wait till?
Uh, let's hear from the audience, Jim.
Okay, uh, before we go to the audience, I, as our rules require us, I'm gonna read, we have one letter and then we'll go to the audience. So we have two letters actually. Uh, the first is from Brian and Debbie Wimble, and I know they're here online tonight. Uh, dear zoning board of appeals, my name is Brian Wimble and I reside at ninety-eight Overlook Avenue, Latham. My property borders forty Taff on the east side. I guess all I can do at this point is to reiterate the reasons for asking that the variance not be granted as I did on December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. My single biggest concern is water. I have a wet basement already and with the four foot elevation change between forty Taff and ninety-eight overlook, the water situation is bound to get worse. The lot right now acts as a leach field and adding a residence driveway, garage, patio and sidewalk, the leaching is sure to be dramatically reduced. Zoning and land use dimensional table for prior established lots has eight requirements. This lot meets two of those requirements. Safety in line of sight for a corner lot is minimal at best. Fire apparatus owned by the town are unable or find it very difficult to negotiate the turn from overlook to Taff. The appearance of this new dwelling on this small lot stuffed into the northwest corner will look like a shed or garage next to the large house on thirty-six Taff. My family and I have lived here for thirty-one years. Now that we're getting toward retirement age, please don't place the burden and expense of making changes to our property for drainage and landscaping for this new dwelling. Thank you, and I look forward to speaking with you. Brian and Debbie, Wimple, ninety-eight Overlook Avenue. Brian and Debbie, are you here?
They are here, but they're muted. I'm gonna ask them to unmute.
Ask them to unmute.
Unmute.
Are we unmuted now?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi there.
Hi.
Hey, Brian, before you start, I have your pictures if you'd like me to share them.
Yep. Oh yeah, if you would, that would be good. Although they, everybody except for one has seen them.
Okay.
But yeah, it would be a good thing.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you, you, my letter kinda summed things up. Um, you know, in looking at the pictures, you know, I don't understand how moving the house and turning it changes the elevation situation. The elevation is gonna be there unless they plan on putting on a very big regating wall. Um, uh, the elevation is the elevation and, and, and the drop off. Um, so I mean, I don't understand how, you know, moving that house is going to, to the corner and making it smaller is gonna change the elevation situation. So again, my main concern is, my understanding is from talking to people that originally were in this neighborhood way, way back. Um, you know, there's an underground stream that runs through the middle of this lot. And as a result, um, you know, the water, when, when the water table gets high, it, it ends up in my basement. And what we're doing now is by putting this house in, we're taking, this lot is all grass, remember that? So when it rains, the water leaches down through the grass. We're gonna take away a huge amount of that leaching ability because water does not leach through roofs. It does not leach, leach through driveways. It does not leach through sidewalks and patios. So we're taking away all the ability for this leaching to take place. And um, you know, wha- what do I do? I mean, I, I, I'm shaking here. What do I do if you people built this, allow this house to be built and all of a sudden I find a foot of water in my basement? When my house was built, my, my boiler is on the floor. It's not even raised up. As a matter of fact, we're in the process of getting a new boiler and they recommend that we do raise it. But the, but, but, so that tells you that at that time, when the house was built and the boiler was installed, there wasn't a concern about water in the basement. Now, within the thirty-one years that we've been here, we have water in our basement and we have to worry about that all the time. And by, by putting another house there and taking away all the leaching abilities, you're not correcting this problem. You're just making it worse. You know, um, so that, you know, that's my main concern about the water. Um, you know, the uh, you know, you, you mentioned about the um, you know, I, 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 the zoning situation. You know, this still does not even come close to meeting the requirements for the zoning. Um, so I'm not sure, why do we have zoning in, in place if we're just gonna allow this kind of stuff to happen? Um, you know, which is, which speaks for itself. Um, by looking at this picture that's up there now, you can see that um, to the uh, left side of the picture, there's a uh, there's a seat, there's a uh, a board that we have covered over with, inside that board is a five foot empty pail with a bunch of drilled holes uh, that, that constantly fills up. And when it fills up, it goes up over the board and in through our uh, in through our basement uh, door, because we have a walk-in basement. So, you know.
They're not talking to you.
Oh, okay. Um, so um, and, and, and continuing on, you know, the, the safety in the line of sight is, is, is not gonna change. Um, as a matter of fact, in, in our situation, and this is how, how forty affects n- n- ninety-eight overlook. By turning the house, what they've done now, or what they've proposed to do is to take the backyard and it's gonna border my house on the east instead of when, before it was on, it was on, it was on the uh, it was on, on the, I was on the side. Now, the, one of the first things that nobody bothered to mention is, we've talked an awful lot about houses. We haven't mentioned an awful lot about corner lots. The house that was built down on thirty-eighth, one of the first things that the homeowners did when they moved in was they put up a six-foot privacy fence all around the uh, the back of the house, which should be any homeowner's right to do in buying a new house. And by looking at this picture that we're looking at right now, to the left, where the red line ends, there is a stone driveway that my wife uses. The traffic, if they, if the homeowners were to put a fence, a, a privacy fence up, you, and we were backing out onto overlook avenue, you would not be able to see cars coming up over the hill from uh, from uh, on, on overlook heading east. There's a picture of it there. Um, that uh, so.
Brian, is it this one you want me to show?
No, could you go down just a little bit backward?
At the uh, sign.
This one a little bit?
No, um, I'm su- I'm sorry. Could you go up a little bit?
Yeah, I'll flip it once we get there.
Okay.
That one?
No, one more. I think it's one more. I might be wrong. No, one more. Just one more, right there. Um, you can, actually you can see my wife's car parked in the driveway right there. Now, if they decide that these people, the backyard is gonna be facing my house. Now, if they decide that they wanna put a six-foot privacy fence up like they did over at thirty-eight, what's gonna, what, what, what protects us? What, what, we can't see people coming over this hill. And believe me, they fly over that hill because they have to accelerate to get up over the hill. But as soon as they hit the crest, they start going directly down again. And uh, that's a main concern. And by moving this house to where they moved it to, they've actually put the backyard up against the house. And is there gonna be some sort of an ordinance that's gonna tell these people of that you can't put a, a privacy fence up? Um, how would you plan on dealing with something like that? Um. The uh, you know, I, I guess, you know, the appearance of the dwelling, I mean, it's a pretty looking house and, and all that kind of stuff and, and um, but you know, my main concern is, you know, we've been here for thirty-one years. My wife and I are getting ready for, you know, within the next few years of retirement. I don't wanna be put into a situation, please, I'm asking you people, please, don't put us in a situation where we're gonna be, we're gonna be required to spend a lot of money on drainage and landscaping and doing all types of things to a house that we were planning on retiring in and uh, spending the twilight years without having to invest a lot of money. So I mean, the, the statement that there's nothing else that you can do with this lot is wrong. There's been two offers to buy that lot, not with the attentions of building houses on it. But there's been one from myself and one from my neighbor, Mary Winnie, who will be here in a few minutes. We've made offers to buy that lot. So to say that there's no other use for that lot, then what's to stop me from buying that lot at a reasonable price? Because the price that I was quoted wasn't even close to being reasonable. And, and adding that total square footage of my house to the square footage of this lot and not, and not asking, at that point, I would have enough properties where I could just apply for a permit to build a garage on, on the, on that property and I would still meet the criteria building department. So the, the, the comment about the fact that there's nothing else that you can do with this lot, that's wrong. You know.
People with a garden.
Yeah. Yeah, we could grow corn if we wanted to. Um, you know, so um, I guess I've kinda beat this to death. So anyway, I'm asking for your people's help with this. It's just, you know, nobody's approved, as I said, in the last five years, nobody's approved a lot smaller than five thousand square feet. Doesn't that kinda tell you something? This is just not a place for a house. And again, if the owners wanna sell the lot, I'm still interested in talking to them about it. And, and, and that's where we are. So thank you folks for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Wimble. Does, does any board, member of the board have a question for Mr. Wimble and his, and/or his wife at this time? Okay, hearing, hearing none, we move on.
Is that, is that a good thing or is that?
I think they're just overwhelmed. Uh, we'll move on. The next person up we'll call Mary. Is Mary Winnie on?
Yes, yeah, she's here with us.
Okay, Mary, I'm going to read your letter that you submitted to the board and then we'll go, and then, oh, there you are.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mary Winnie. I live at ninety-seven Overlook Avenue, Latham. I also own ninety-nine Overlook Avenue, which is next door to my home. Forty Taff is the lot access the street from my homes. Together with other neighbors, we have come before the zoning board to appeal the building of a house on this lot for many reasons. The board voted against the house being built and now the builder has come back with a proposal for a different house. The lot size has not changed. This house is still too large for a lot. It is the largest house on the smallest lot of those that have come before the board in the last few years. Sixty-nine overlook being one and the other was on Grapevine. The corner lot is, is at the peak of the hill, very poor visibility from cars in any directions. A house that spot blocks visibility, as I have stated, it would not be in harmony with the neighborhood. The, the Wimbles property on ninety-eight overlook next to forty Taff and the, the half basement flooding issues runoff etc. In addition, the streets are very narrow and I respectfully ask the board to adhere to your original decision and do not allow a house to be built on the lot. I would also like to inform you that I personally phoned Steven Trinelli last spring to inquire about purchasing a lot from him. He stated he was interested, however, he never got back to me. I'd, I'd like the lot to maintain it, something that Mr. Bioli fails to do and use a portion of it as flower garden. I tell that to you because I do not want you to think he has not been approached. Also, this letter I'm writing is rather short notice, but I only saw the posting on the poll of the lot yesterday. I appreciate you taking the time to read this letter and respectfully ask, do you please vote in favor of leaving this an undeveloped lot? Let us maintain the harmony in our neighborhood. You have listened to us in the past. Nothing has changed. Once again, please look at the size of this house versus the actual lot size. Mary, thank you for your letter.
Thank you.
You have anything to add at this point in time?
I do. I do. Thank you. Yes, sir. And uh, thank you to the board for letting me speak. Uh, we're right back where we were before. Um, I'd like to say that. Um, I'd like to say that um, Mr. DeLucia has has, when he was speaking earlier, mentioned and showed pictures of all the other houses. He didn't show my two homes, he didn't show the Wimbles, he didn't show the Daleys, which are next door, or the people on Taft across from forty-taft, if you will. Um, I'm still dissatisfied. Um, I don't think this, this is a positive response. I understand that um, the house is smaller. It's still, if you incorporate, um, from what I read, if you incorporate the garage, it's still twenty thousand square feet. I believe what is mentioned is only seventeen, and don't quote me on that give or take, but it's still a twenty thousand square foot house on this little lot. It it it's still the same piece of property, the same location. Overlook and and we've gone over this previously. Overlook, this is the 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 peak hill. Where this lot is, whether you're overlook or tapped on the corner there, it's the peak hill where traffic comes, comes up. Right, so that spot, it tapped in overlook.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is still um, still the highest peak. I mean, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed with the location. Now, as I stated in my letter, I did speak with um, Steven, um, inquiring about purchasing the lot. Myself or myself and my husband, just us, not having anything to do with the neighbors. Um, and I mentioned that because when we came before the board regarding um, the lot on Grapevine, one of the gentlemen on the board, whose name, I'm sorry, can't remember, and he said to me, well, what would you like to do with the lot? And he had a good point. So this lot, I would want maintained. All right, I would want part of it a flower garden. And anybody who knows me knows I would do that. Um, just keep it, we don't have to take all the green space in Latham. Um, I understand this is a business for Mr. DeLucia. Um, it's a, it's a, it's for money, I get that. Um, I still think the size of the house, despite the modifications that he's made, still, it's not going to fit. It's, it's just, the lot is just too small, the location of it on the corner. Um, and again, I reiterate that, the fact that he didn't show pictures of my homes or anybody else's that are adjacent to it. And granted, he's built other homes in in the town, in this area. Um, the overlook, you know, the development, if you will, that we're in. So I'm asking you to please, um, you know, take all of of, you know, our concerns and um, statements into consideration. I appreciate you allowing us to speak. Um, I don't think that um, this house is any better than the other house when it comes down to the drainage and the site, line of sight and um, I'm, I, you know, again, I appreciate it, but I'm asking you please to consider all our concerns and um, take everything into consideration and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary. Any board member, any board members have a question for Mary at this time?
I do, Jim.
Oh, yes, David.
You said you did make an offer to purchase.
I did.
To Ted?
Not to Ted, I called Steven, and I don't know, I can't say, I'm terrible with names, but Steven, the owner of the lot. I phoned him in May. It was in the spring and I phoned him, we spoke and I said this exact same conversation. He knew who I was, he said, listen, I just want you to know I'm interested in purchasing the house. Are you interested in selling it? He said, um, yeah, I am. And I said, okay, great. He goes, let me talk to my family. I said, great. I said, give me a call back. He never returned my call. He did ask me this question. He said, are you calling for yourself or all your neighbors? I said, no. I said, I'm calling for myself. I am married, I have a husband, so either myself or myself and my husband, I would never do anything. I love my neighbors, but I wouldn't purchase a piece of property with all my neighbors. So I called and I, we didn't talk much, he never called me back. It was in May of this past, past May. So I did, I did phone him.
Ted, were you, or would you entertain an offer to contact your client and see if, you know, if if you're not going to be able, if you, assuming maybe you're, if you get turned down, would you entertain or have your client entertain her offer to buy it if the offer still stands?
What I can, what can I, I can say to that, uh, Dave, is a couple of things. And again, I I don't know, is your name, I'm sorry, is your name Mary?
Mary, yes.
Okay, I I don't know the particulars with Mary. I, Steve is my client, okay? He's the owner of the property. We ne- we connected with him four years ago. I work also consultant with the builders, okay? And and really one primary builder that likes to build small houses. He's, and he builds big houses, but don't get me wrong. He likes to build small houses on small lots, low costs. You know, you get them done fairly quick, you don't make a lot of money, but that's what he likes to do. So when I find communities like this that aren't, lots like this that aren't four hundred thousand dollar homes or like high two hundreds, that's, that's my builder. I put these people together, okay? I don't make any money. When I make money, it's very simple, I'm not shy guy, I'll tell you, I make money to do the variance. If I got, which I got more money to do this again. If we got approved the first time, it, we would have been done, believe it, ain't a lot of money. So I know you said for me to make money, it's nothing to do with Ted. Ted doesn't make money if I get the variance. I'm already done, I I'm been paid. It's between the client, the owner, and my client. They they have a negotiation going on, okay? They they settled on a price. What, the only thing I can tell you, and I'm not putting this on you, Mary, he's told me he's had offers for this property ridiculously low.
We never talked money, excuse me.
Well, I don't know, I I get.
We never spoke money because I called.
Mary, I'm not implying you, please, that's all I said in my, started my sentence. I said, but others have been ridiculously low. All right? And I'm not, I'm not ashamed to tell you the value, I'll tell you the prices because that's how I operate. Because I I do a lot, I try to do a lot of variances for people. This is, this is a low value lot because you can only build a two-hundred-some-thousand-dollar house. The builder is only going to make like probably forty grand, believe it or not. This is a twenty-five-thousand-dollar lot. He's told me he's got a couple of offers from the neighbors, mean, he didn't name names of about five thousand dollars. He goes, I I mean, what, what, five thousand, I guess to him is not sufficient. Now, to a building.
Okay, can we wrap this conversation up because we want to, we have a lot of other people to.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean for you guys to get into a price negotiations online. I just want to know if, I wanted to know if an offer or discussions were made, that's all, I don't need details.
Well, there was, but that was the extent that I heard.
Okay, that's good enough for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Ted.
Yes, thank you so much, sir.
Kim, who's next on, who's who's next up?
Ari, there's a Jill and Jim Daly that are here.
Okay.
Um, there, if you'd like to speak, I just need you to unmute yourself.
Hello, we're here.
Hi.
Hi. Um, we did send in a letter.
Kim, do you have our letter?
I do not.
It was emailed to Kim the other day.
All right, I'm going to look if you want, just give me a second here.
While Kim's looking, I neglected to mention, I do have a petition that is signed by over thirty residents of Taft and Overlook in the neighborhood in opposition to the variance granting. So there is a petition also that goes into eight different points of view. So that's in the record also.
I'm searching, guys. Okay, hold on.
While she's looking for the letter, I have a question for Ted. Ted, what what was the dimensions of the house you originally proposed? You mentioned that it was forty-four feet wide.
Correct.
Forty-four by?
Yeah, it was forty-four wide by, uh, I believe twenty-six feet deep. It it was uh, hold on, bear with me for one sec because I have it right here. It was uh, forty-four by twenty-six.
Okay, so now we're thirty-nine by twenty-six.
Right now, well, yes, if you want to count the porch, yes. If not, we're really thirty-two by twenty-six. That that is a porch, that little six by twelve that juts out, that's just an open front porch, one-story front porch to get into the front door. So that's no really like living.
It's really, it's very similar dimensions to the house you previously, which also, the 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 two thousand square foot figure for that house included the garage, but the square footage on this house does not include the garage.
This, yeah, the square footage is sixteen, about sixteen hundred square feet on this. The footprint, as I said, it's it's nine hundred, about nine hundred square foot.
Not including the garage.
Including the garage.
Right.
So the actual. No, no, the footprint is nine hundred and four square feet. That's the footprint, including the garage.
But the square footage of the home.
Plus the garage is two thousand square feet.
Is roughly two thousand square foot, just like the original proposed home, even though it's a slightly different design.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, so that is a bit misleading.
Um, yeah, well, I beg to differ because it, the other house is forty-four by twenty-four, two stories high, okay? Total full two stories. This house is not a full two-story high. It's, if you look at the design, it steps back, the second floor steps back, okay? It's, and it has a front open porch, which is not part of your square footage of a, of a living space. And and we don't really say garage is living space, but that's, you know, that's my point.
Yeah, but the structure on, the structure is still two thousand square feet. That was included last time, it wasn't included this time with the garage. If you do the math, that's what it comes out to be. So essentially, it's not really that much different. It's a few square feet different than what it was the original time. It may look slightly different because it's a different design. All that's changed, that lot size, and there's some questions on that lot size because if you look at the town GIS, um, they say it's point nine acres, which equals out to forty-one hundred square feet. You've got forty-four. I know that's a small amount, but you're talking a small lot here. Um, we, nothing has changed. All that's changed is they've turned it towards Taft.
Well, look, I'm just going to tell you what what the square footage is and, you know, I don't want to happily or go back and forth. The first floor is six hundred and thirty-two square foot, not including the garage. We, I mean, the garage is not living space. The footprint, we've already discussed, the footprint's nine hundred, which is only twenty percent or nineteen percent of the lot. First floor is six hundred and thirty-two square feet and the second floor is one thousand thirty-two square feet. So it's sixteen hundred square foot of house.
Okay.
It has an open front porch and that's, that's what, that's.
Our point is that we're comparing this house to your originally proposed house. The originally proposed house was roughly two thousand square feet and that figure included the garage. This house, including the garage, is roughly two thousand square feet. So, so while the design of the home changed, the way the house is facing changed. The size of the structure is roughly the same. The size of the lot is the same, so not a lot of changes.
Ours is four hundred square feet smaller. I mean, it's just, that's the numbers. It's, I'm not going to say anymore, it's four hundred square foot smaller. The footprint is smaller, it's nine hundred square foot. And the the envelope that we're using to put this house on is smaller. And it's, it is in a much better location. Based on, I'll talk about the drainage, I don't want to interrupt every, you know, every person, but I I would like to talk at the end to answer some of those questions that were brought by the neighbors.
Yeah, well, Ted, thank you, we'll save your comments till the end.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jill, go ahead.
Did, did you find our letter?
Jill, the only thing I have is that you initially filled out a FOIL request that was for May.
Which was never responded to, but I did send you a letter just the other day.
And it's the Verizon email?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, what I'm going to, I'll keep looking, but I I don't, I don't see anything. If we could.
Well, Jill, if you have the letter, why don't you read it into the record for us?
Oh, that's great, okay.
Seriously, just read it.
Okay, we would like to share some of our concerns regarding the pros, proposed development of the lot located at forty Taft Ave. This property was brought before the zoning board back in two thousand seventeen, carried over into two thousand eighteen uh, by the same owner and developer. At that time, several neighbors came forward expressing concerns due to the small lot size, the line of sight distance concerns, emergency vehicles having difficulty navigating the intersection, drainage, et cetera. At that time, the zoning board denied the request for the building permit. The property is a corner lot which intersects with Overlook Ave on the crest of a hill. Taft and Overlook are both very narrow roadways. Line of sight up and over the hill on Overlook and around the corner on Taft is already a safety issue. The proposed lot is the smallest lot in the neighborhood. The home proposed for this lot is significantly larger than most of the area homes. The proposed dwelling is stated to be seventeen hundred square foot. This figure does not include the garage, which is part of the dwelling. Therefore, the dwelling would be approximately two thousand square foot. If this application is approved, this home would be the largest home on the smallest lot in the immediate area. We also submitted a reference sheet showing the surrounding lot sizes and home sizes. Um, to summarize, only three things changed from the proposal from two thousand seventeen to today. The style of the house, the position of the house, and the decreased setback on the shared property line with thirty-six Taft. The lot size did not change. The size of the house is relatively the same. The issues with the corner, the line of sight distances, narrow intersections, drainage, et cetera, are all the same. The application was denied in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and should be denied again today. We have a stable neighborhood with many longtime residents who have invested interest in this neighborhood. The quality of life in our neighborhood should not be jeopardized for the sake of a developer who is just trying to make a profit, not meaning Ted making a profit, but the owner of the property making a profit and the developer making a profit. Development of this property with a home. Oh, there it is. Okay, uh, development of this property will have a negative effect on our neighborhood and we hope the board will seriously consider the unique circumstances surrounding this property. This property is a small lot on a corner. Very small lot on a corner. Thank you, Kim, for finding the letter.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Kim, we'll talk to you tomorrow. Thank you, Jill and Jim, for uh, any, do any of our board members have any questions for Jill and or Jim regarding their comments and observations at this time? But thank you again for.
Can I make one, can I make?
Yeah, yeah, please do, Jim, please.
Um, Ted talked about the fact, and I know he was referring to our house, which is right on Taft Ave. This house was built ninety years ago. I'm not even sure Taft Ave was there at the time. Okay, so to kind of equate that is is a little bit. And also, he keeps talking a lot about the one on Grapevine. Well, that was two thousand square foot bigger than this lot. He's putting a house that's bigger than the one he put on Grapevine on a four thousand square foot lot. It it's, it's just, I don't know how small the lots can go.
Thank you, Jim, that's, that's a good. Kim, anyone else?
Yes, we have a Gerald here.
Gerald?
Gerald, I just need you to unmute. Hold on.
Tell us where you live, Gerald, too, please.
He's still.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I live at thirty-five Taft, right across the street from the Daley's house. Uh, kind of kitty corner to forty Taft. Uh, there's not much more I can say what hasn't been said by everybody else. The, the thing, like everybody else has said, you know, things have changed, but the lot size has not. Um, the pictures that Ted was showing of a lot of the homes around on the corners and stuff like that. Um, these homes were, been here fifty, sixty years. I was looking at my old deeds that I have on my house from nineteen eleven. And uh, you know, I mean, this is a very old development. The, the, the building codes have been changed, so, or you know. So, or, you know, the setbacks and everything else have been changed, where it, it's almost fifty years since the twelve thousand square foot ruling was put in place, you know, it was mentioned it was in the seventies. It, and they said, you know, it went up to like twenty-four thousand or something like that, but, you know, this is a four thousand square foot lot. It's very small, very tight. I, I really, you know, can't add much more to what other people have said. Um, one other thing we do have on the street, like Jill, everybody's mentioned narrow streets, well, the December snowstorm that we had, the plow went down our street, and you could barely get one car up and down our street until it melted. Um, you know, I mean, if this is gonna be a case of crowding more traffic onto our street, possibly visitors, like you said, parking on the street, uh, especially on a corner house like that. But I, I really, you know, I, I'm opposed to it for a simple reason. It's changing our neighborhood. And I remember at the meetings that we had before where Steven said that he cared about this neighborhood, because he grew up here. He didn't care about the neighborhood. If he did, he would have moved out, and he did not grow up here. His family lived over by Siena College. So, uh, you know, all I can say is, I'm against it. Lot is too small. I've got a nine hundred square foot house on eleven thousand square foot property. Granted, people ahead of me bought the extra property and stuff, but nevertheless, you know, it's, uh, I'm still not up to code, I still don't have the twelve thousand square feet. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Board members, anything for Jerry? Kim, who's next?
We have one more speaker, John Hughes. John, if you'd like to speak, I just need you to unmute yourself.
And John, just let us know where you live also, please. There you go.
Oh, he muted himself, that mistake. There you go.
You're good.
You can hear me, okay. Uh, my name's John Hughes, I'm at thirty-four Grapevine Place. I don't know that we are directly impacted by this house that's, uh, proposed to go up. But we're on the call, my wife and I, to support our neighbors. We've lived here for forty-five years. Uh, I understand exactly what they're talking about. The only thing that I can add to this, Pat Quinn is not on this call. She had a, another meeting that she had to go to. But, uh, even though that, I know Ted said that the water cannot, the water drainage cannot be a problem, but uh, I know since the house is built on thirty-eight Grapevine, that, uh, she tells us that she's now getting ready to put her second sump pump in, because the first one is not adequate. She's getting more drainage into her basement than she ever got before. And, uh, the same rules were in place when that house was built. No problem with the house, no problem with the people that live there, but, uh, it seems like, even though people say there cannot be any, uh, drainage impact, it seems like there is, and if Brian has that concern, that may very well be, uh, an adequate thing. So, uh, but, you know, we don't have a lot more to add, but, uh, I'm in support of the neighborhood.
Thank you, John. Board members, any, any questions for the users? Not at this time? All right, Ted will, will be generous and give you an opportunity to respond to some of the, uh, comments that you've heard here tonight.
I appreciate that, Mr. Campbell. I mean, I'll be very brief, you know, um, because we've discussed this numerous times, uh. I know the neighbors are concerned with traffic and all that, and, and I, as I said, I can, I can understand that, I sympathize with that, but I think if you have to look at what I've worked on in this neighborhood with other properties that were developed, I mean, we do provide the parking that is necessary for the property. Um, it, it's just that way, it gets cars off the street, and again, here we'll be doing the same thing, so we're not having issues with vehicles that pertain to that house that are creating these traffic hazard or conditions that they're referring to. Um, the sight distance issue is not gonna be a problem. We've improved that sight distance issue when we were, built thirty-eight Grapevine. Uh, the same thing will happen here, the house is so far over to the one side, it has no impact on the corner. Um, I know the gentleman that was next door on thirty-eight, I, sorry, I forgot his name, but he was saying if a fence went up, and so on and so forth, well, this law. The law prohibits you to put a fence up that, that obstructs any vision of traffic or anything of that nature. Uh, that's a traffic safety, uh, issue with, with the town of Colony. And if the board was feel, felt to approve this variance, certainly could put conditions on it. Um, my opinion, the conditions would be, you know, you got, you can't have any accessory structures or pools, you know, unless you went back to the board, because it's not a secret, it is a smaller lot. Um, the drainage issue that the gentleman next door is worried about, I've done this long enough to be with these people that do this type of thing, and I know no one's gonna believe it, but it's gonna improve his condition if we build on this property. Because the design has to pull water away from the edges of lands and go into systems that will allow the land to perk. I mean, traditionally, they do, I don't know if you can see this, I'm not an engineer, but I've been around enough to see that they will start swaling this area, make this the high point, and everything will pitch towards the house. Problem he has there now, living over here, is that the water's going shedding this way. It's not gonna happen, it's gonna have to just be done the other way. I know I'm preaching to probably nobody, because they said, oh, it won't happen, it won't happen, but the facts are, it will happen. You know, I, I only can tell you what I know, but factual stuff. Most of the stuff that's raised is, you know, no one wants to see the house. I understand the lot's small. This could happen, this could happen, this could happen. But, well, I need to talk to the facts, and, and I do have some background in that, in that area. Um, like they said, the sump pump is working in that house, well, that's because it's taking the groundwater that would be going out somewhere else, which it's designed to do. Maybe the pump is undersized, maybe the pipe is undersized, but that, it's doing the job that it's supposed to do. It's, it's taking the water. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Ted. All right, board members, had questions after listening? I know you wanted to defer until after hearing from the public.
I just, am I like to make a comment?
Yeah, please, David.
You're, you're looking here, you want, uh, you have forty-four hundred and nineteen feet, square feet now, which means you're short about seventy-five hundred. I'd be more apt to listen to this if you had seventy-five hundred square feet and you're short the forty-four. That's kinda tiny. I mean, if you were working with seventy-five hundred square feet, I'd be more apt to to listen and to try to make it work. That's quite a short. I mean, you're, you're working and trying for forty-four hundred, which is an awfully small piece of land.
I, I understand what you're saying. Um, last quote I'll make is that this has been a lot within subdivision sets that was established. It has a sewer lateral to the property to be developed. It's been taxed, uh, that way from the beginning. So the intent was always that something had to be built there, you know, that was the design of the, of the, of the subdivision.
Yep, I understand what you're, what you're doing. I fully understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, you know, I usually don't wanna comment, but I will on that point. I mean, yes, that, there was an intent to build something on that lot, on that lot, when the subdivision was developed a hundred years ago, or how many years ago it was? We're in the two thousand twenty-one now, and our town minimums are dramatically different. And, but just for the record, Ted, what was the, the lot size of thirty-eight Grapevine?
That was, uh, just around six.
So it's, it's.
Fifty-nine hundred, fifty-eight hundred.
So it's a good, it's a good fifteen hundred square feet larger than this lot, but yet, but yet we're holding out Grapevine as the example that these things work. Well, maybe it did work at Grapevine, maybe it didn't, we made a decision on Grapevine and we're gonna stand by it. But this lot is a lot different than Grapevine, in all due respect. Nick, did you have hand up?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't. Yeah, I, I didn't know how, how much more, uh, um, audience, uh, comment.
I think we're done with the audience, right, Kim?
Correct. Correct.
So, any other comments, questions? Counsel, anything to add?
No, I think this, uh, you know, it's been a good hearing. We've, uh, heard from the neighbors and we've heard from Ted, I think, uh, all but our new, newest board members were, were present, I think, in the seventeen, eighteen application, uh, at that time, where I think the board is well versed on the conditions in the neighborhood over there. The, uh, and, uh, but it's a, it's a tough case. It's a, it's a case with the, that's hard to balance. The, uh, the lot is extremely small, the, uh, but, you know, it's up to the board what they wanna do in the matter. The, uh, if the board wishes to move it to the next meeting to have time to consider the, uh, the minutes to hear and, uh, to review it, I have no problem with that. If you wish to take a vote on it tonight, that's obviously your call, Jim, so.
Gee, thanks, Mike. The only other question I had, uh, this, no, that was the lot, so, well, I'll be the heavy here and make the motion to deny the request for the variance. And then every board member is subject to be either vote with me on the denial or against me on the approval, and then we can go from there. We have.
I'll second it, Jim.
Okay, thank you. We, just for the record, we have six board members here with us tonight. It requires four votes affirmatively or negatively to approve or disapprove the motion. So, um, is there any further discussion on the motion that's before the board for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Member Swanson?
With the motion.
Member Vigiani?
With your motion.
Member Nardalilo?
Oh, you're on mute. Hold on.
Mary?
She's still muted. You're muted, Mary, there you go.
I vote with the motion.
Thank you. Uh, member Rosenthal?
With the motion.
Member Hung?
Um, I'm going to vote with the motion, however, I do have, uh, you know, uh, some sympathy for the owner, you know, he has this lot, and, uh, you know, be just sit there and, so I, I really kinda hope maybe the neighbors, you know, can offer the owner something to buy the lot, of course, you know, it's, uh, hopefully it's an agreeable price. Yeah, that's, that's my comment, uh, with, with the, uh, going along with the motion.
Thank you, Kirk. And, Kirk, I too share some of your concerns in that regard. But, uh, you know, I'd, I'd love to have the owner donate the lot to the town, and we turn it into a park. Wouldn't that be a wonderful little park-a-park in that neighborhood? With his name on a plaque and everything, but having said that, I vote with the motion, uh, the variance is hereby denied. I, at this point in time, I would like to thank the neighborhood and for taking the time and effort to really participate in an open and transparent manner, via Zoom, of course, but nonetheless, it's, it's something new. And Ted, I wanna thank you on behalf of, really a great presentation tonight, covering all the questions that the board members have had and the neighbors have had in the past. So, um, so I wanna just thank everyone for your patience. And we'll move on to our next item, which I think, Ted, you can't leave yet.
No, I guess not.
And thank you. The next item is two, two oh seven Nutwood, is that correct, Lynn?
Yes, Kim, yes.
Take notice that the Colony Town Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a televised hearing on the third of February two thousand twenty-one at seven PM to hear the appeal of Ted DeLucia Vision Planning Consultants for Agent for Capital Builders from the Decision of the Building Department Manager for the Town of Colony, denying him a building permit for the premises located at two oh seven Nutwood Avenue. The proposed subdivision of a thirty thousand plus or minus square foot lot into two lots, a sixteen thousand plus or minus square lot with an existing single-family dwelling, two oh seven Nutwood, and a fourteen thousand plus or minus square lot with a seventy-foot front lot line and a seventy-foot width at the building setback for the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling with a thirty-foot front yard setback, which is proposed for two oh five Nutwood Avenue, is not compliant with the required eighteen thousand square foot minimum lot size, eighty-foot minimum front yard, front lot line, and eighty-foot minimum width at the building setback line at a forty-foot minimum front yard setback required in a single-family residential zoning district as stated in the Town of Colony Land Use Law, Article Six, Sections one ninety dash twenty-four, one ninety dash twenty-five, and one ninety, Attachment Number Two, Dimensional Table. Upon the request for variance for the provisions of the Code of the Town of Colony, Chapter one ninety, to permit such construction and use, and a secret determination for such appeal. To protect public safety during the state of emergency triggered by COVID nineteen, this public hearing will take place via video commerce. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman during the hearing. A member of the public wishing to listen and view this meeting, please refer to the town's YouTube channel. The affidavit of publication is duly noted, and this has been determined to be an unlisted seeker action which will require further review by this board. Ted?
Yes, sir.
Give us a quick overview of two oh seven Nutwood, please, if you would.
Thank you. Um, this is, uh, obviously a, a much different proposal. The parcel is quite large, uh, it's in the, uh, west side of the Town of Colony, if you will. Um, it, it currently, and that survey doesn't show it, I believe there's two that I submitted. Um, the, that shows, that's, well, that's the house, but in any event, we're in a single-family residential zoning district. With, uh, current one-family home on this large parcel of land, which is on the lot to the left of this. That you're seeing in your survey there, for some reason, I don't know maybe where the other one is.
No, this is the same one, that's just kinda colored in. You want me to zoom in, which one? Give me a neighbor name.
The one to the left, which looks like a vacant rectangle right there, there's an existing one-family home on there, which is the, basically this house, uh, that's blacked out, if you can see it, I'm sorry. But this is the day it was zoned. So there is a house already parallel with the one you're seeing in this survey. Uh, on a, this entire existing parcel, which is, uh, thirty thousand square foot of land. So this is the second lot to the end of the street on Nutwood. What we're looking to do is to create, um, a two-lot subdivision to, for the purpose to build this one-family home that is shown on the survey in front of you now that you're, that you're looking at. That's going to be a seventy, seventy-foot wide lot, uh, opposed to the current law, which is eighty. We're going to propose to keep the other house that's on the lot at eighty foot of width that complies. Um, we are asking for the setback of this to be thirty foot, which is gonna be parallel with the existing neighborhood. Uh, it just looks better to be, uh, the continuity, if you will. And we're gonna maintain the proper side yard setbacks for the current zoning law. We're slightly under the square footage, uh, of the eighteen thousand, it is fourteen thousand. Um, it's a very deep lot, it goes back two hundred feet. The lot for the existing house to the left, that's gonna be a sixteen thousand square foot lot, so that's also very close to the current standard. Um, there is a parcel, uh, with an existing home to the right of this, which was built on, uh, in, I believe, there was a variance given for that house on that lot. I believe it was, I apologize, had it right here, oh, here it is. In, uh, two thousand and ten. And I have the photograph of that. It's a, it's a key card, if you will. This home's right here. That, this is the house just to the right of the one we're proposing, and that is a very small lot. Um, we'll talk about small lots again, that's not a six thousand square foot lot. Uh, but that was an existing lot that was there, so the board back then felt it was, uh, appropriate. So that is our neighbor to the right. So, the reason I'm pointing that out is, what we're trying to do with this new house back on that survey is we are keeping the driveway and garage to the left side, so it would be the furthest away from that house on the right that I just showed you. And therefore, it would be closer to the existing house, uh, which is owned by the daughter. The daughter lives in the house, uh, that's existing of, of, of Capital Land Builders, and the last house on the street was, which is further down to the left, that is his other daughter. So he's got about six kids, but, so, you, oh, that's wonderful, thank you for that.
Sorry about, there you go.
Perfect. So what we're looking at, um, is, um, hold on here a second, yes, the very last house to the left, that's the daughter that.
Two oh nine?
Two oh nine, correct. The house we're working on is two oh seven with the red dot. Now, you'll see it looks like a white roof there. That's actually the garage, attached, a detached, that's all gonna come down, that's gonna. That's going to go away. And that's where the new property line is going to come down to separate two oh seven from the vacant land to the right, which would be, I guess, two oh five. The little cape is the one with like the dark roof, two oh three, I guess it shows there. That's the one on the six thousand square foot lot. So basically what we're looking to do here is to create a two lot subdivision to build one new home on a fourteen thousand square foot lot, seventy foot wide, which is again slightly under the requirement of ten foot, excuse me, by ten foot. But we're still going to maintain the proper setbacks that are required for distant separation. Um, the house, I believe I have a copy of it. Mm hmm. In your packet, which is built, this has been built more than once and it's fairly modest.
Oh, I have that.
Now, okay. It's not overwhelming, but again, it's, you know, the typical three or four bedroom, two bath. And it fits ample in into that space, we feel. Um, again, we're at the very end of the street, so it really has not a lot of negative impact on any neighbor, if you will, or the environment. Um, this is the vacant lot as it sits today. Sorry, but I know it's a little hard showing you this kind of stuff. And this is the garage that I showed you in the overview that's going to be removed. That's the existing house. That garage will be removed. So I'll open it up for whatever you'd like to ask me.
All right, thank you. David, anything?
I have no issues with this at all. Ted, you're getting better at sizes now. I have no problem with that. You're only two thousand square feet short. Um, I have no problem. I think this is a good, good plan.
Thank you, Mary.
Ted, is this, did you say this was for one of his relatives or their relatives? Or is this, what is the split of lot?
Yeah, the new, the new house, to my understanding, I'm not too certain that the new house is going to be for another child. But I can tell you that is he has the two houses that are left there. He just built the one on the very end for his daughter. The one where the garage is going to come down that I pointed out, his daughter's already in that one, another daughter. And there's some speculation his son's going to move into the new house. But I I have to say that I can't promise you that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Tracy?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Nick?
Do we have any audience on this?
No, we have one letter, which I'll read into it. It's pretty brief.
Okay, Ted.
Well, I'll read the letter now. It's it's from Robert P L U N Z, who lives at two oh six Nutwood, which would be across the street.
Okay.
Sir, as a concerned senior and because of COVID nineteen concerns, I will not be able to attend the hearing. However, I wish to state for the record that I am against granting the appeal to take a legal lot, two oh seven Nutwood, and make it into two noncompliant lots is ridiculous. Excuse me, the lot sizes would be significantly smaller than a minimum size requirement. Very true, you're very truly yours, Robert S. Pluntz. That's all we have on this, Nick.
Thanks, Jim. That was going to be my question to Ted. Have we heard anything from neighbors across the street? I guess
Just I haven't spoken to anybody, Nick. I know the owner of Capeland Builders. He actually, like I said, his daughter lives there, the daughter, other daughter, he's built the house. He actually built the house that I, um, just the next street over himself. He moved there with his wife. Uh, this house gentleman's talking about was a ranch that that's probably about fifteen years old. And that was built on that lot, which, um, yeah, doesn't comply with the current eighteen thousand square foot either.
All right.
Grandfather, there was
Just a question out of curiosity, Ted, with these lots being so long, was there any um, uh, any discussion of doing like a keyhole lot on any of these?
Um, no, not really, because I always felt that on a lot of boards, although your board is pretty open minded, which is good to work with at times that they're negative on a on a, you know, keyhole lot. Um, because of the access, if you will, house behind a house. We just felt that, you know, we could create two lots here, one being eighty, which is the current law requirement. And then one being seventy, which is not obviously we're we're short by ten feet. I was suggesting even to go seventy five, seventy five. You know what I mean? To get close, but I'm saying really, we're talking about five feet. That's as far as I'm putting my hands apart. I don't really think it really.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I was I was just curious just because of the shape of these lots, but
It's a pretty big parcel, you know?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. No other questions, Jim.
Thank you, Nick. Kirk?
Uh, no, no que, hold a second. No question.
Okay, thank you. Michael, counsel?
Uh, I have no problem with the application, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Pulled like that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance as requested. Mary makes the motion. Seconded, seconded by David. We'll move to a vote. Member Vigiani?
With the motion.
Member Nardalilo?
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Rosenthal.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Swanson.
With the motion.
Uh, Kirk?
With the motion.
And the chair votes with the motion. It's hereby, did I ask her? I got everybody, right? It's it's hereby approved. Okay, Ted, you're one for one for two.
Yeah, I don't know. I I'm, it's like the Super Bowl all over again.
All right, okay, well, well, we maybe maybe you can go two for three.
I would love to.
Uh, forty six Fuller Road is next. Take notice that the Town of Colony Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a televised hearing on the third of February two thousand twenty one at seven P M. To hear the appeal of Ted De Lucia Vision Planning Consultants for Agent Colleen Marcela, Marcela, from the division, from the decision of the Building Department Manager for the Town of Colony, denying him a building permit for the premises located at forty six Fuller Road. The proposed construction in a commercial office residential zoning district of a new four thousand nine hundred square foot commercial building with future fast food uses and associated waste refuse dumpsters are not permitted within two hundred feet of a zone boundary line of a single family residential zoning district. The proposed front yard parking area is within the required fifteen foot setback. Also, four existing accessory shed shed structures are located within twenty five feet of the boundary line of an existing single family use, which are not permitted as stated in the Town of Colony Land Use Law, Article Six, Sections one ninety dash twenty four, one ninety dash twenty five, and one ninety dash twenty six D sub four, Article ten, Section one ninety dash forty seven G, and one ninety attachment number two dimensional table, Note five. Upon the request for variance from the provisions of the code of Town of Colony, Chapter one ninety to permit such construction and use and a secret determination for such appeal. To protect the public safety during the state of emergency triggered by nineteen COVID nineteen, this public hearing will take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman. A member of the public wishing to listen and view the meeting, please visit the town's YouTube channel with the following link, which reminds me, we have to do the seeker on our prior property. So, uh, let's not Ted, don't let me forget that, okay?
All right, very good.
All right, Ted, you want to just explain a little bit about this proposal, which is commercial?
Yes, it is. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, that site plan. That's helpful. Um, this is obviously a very unique parcel of land along Fuller Road, if you will. Um, it really runs between, um, two streets, which are Cherry Street and the other street is Spruce Street. Um, it's a very large parcel of land. It goes all the way back, uh, thousands of feet. Um, it's four point three acres. Um, the front portion, well, you'll see there's a dash line behind the proposed retail building. That's where the zoning line splits, if you will, to the right, a single family residential zoning district. And in front of that is the commercial office residential. Um, what impacts this property, and I I trust that you read my point of interest, um, um, information, I won't really go through all that. Of course, if you have questions, I'll answer whatever I can. The top portion of this survey is a New York State Utility Drainage Easement, if you will. There's a big pipe that goes underneath Fuller Road, goes down, and it actually dumps right into where you see like a spider web to the right side there. Uh, and that is where the culvert opens up. Uh, that's to carry the drainage across the west side of Fuller Road to the east side as well as some drainage along for the road. So what we have is the reason why you'll see this building kind of tight to the, um, to the south property line is because we cannot do anything within this whole area of about fifty feet, I believe, uh, of where that whole pipe and easement goes through. In addition, where that I'll call it the spider web to the very right is that's where the pipe opens up. That's where the elevation, all those little lines are two foot elevations. There's a severe drop off that goes down to where this ravine is. And then there's this other buffer line, which is not too good to see here and that site plan, but that is the water course buffer. It comes very close to the corner of our building. We'll see the two corner ninety degree corners. We have to stay out of that one hundred foot water course buffer, which that's the design shows that. So the entire land that we don't show on the survey, uh, that goes all the way back thousands of feet is not unusable because it's just a huge ravine that runs behind all these rear yards along Cherry and Spruce. So the only spot that we can put a building on this parcel is basically the footprint of what you see of the parking lot and the building. Um, it restricts about seventy thousand square foot of area because of the easements, the water course, and the slope stabilities of the land. So we're really only allowed to use about this twenty percent in front. Um, I bet that's parallel with Fuller Road. Um, the plan that you have in front of you is not the first plan that we tried to use. We have been in front of the planning board two times for, um, for a draft plan review. The first plan, I don't know if you can see this very well, but this is our first proposal. The red is the building outlined. And what it was is it was up close to Fuller Road. So basically what you're looking at here is just a flip flop. We had the building right parallel with the close to the road twenty foot with a parking lot towards the back where it shows, holds retail. The planning board didn't like that. They thought the impact to, uh, the residential zoning line would be more of an impact with cars coming in and coming out, parking with headlights and so on. Then if we had a building there to basically buffer, uh, that activity. So obviously, we listened to what they said. We went back to the drawing board and brought this proposal in front of the planning board, which they were in favor of this. We, they did know we needed a couple of variances, but they said that they are comfortable the way the plan is. We may have to tweak it somewhat if we receive a zoning approval. But in any event, um, we went with what they said and we hopefully your this board feels somewhat similar. So the variances that we're looking for that you mentioned are because there is a buffer that from the residential zoning district that that tells you how far you can and can't be away from that zoning district. So in any event, we couldn't move the building any further away. We did have it further away, which would put us on the buffer. But then we were basically told we had to go in the buffer, sake of argument. Uh, the dumpster location was something that Nick Costa designed. And, uh, actually, I was uneducated on that and didn't realize that would require a variance. Uh, but it certainly does. So there's already been discussion that we wouldn't have a problem flipping that, of course, from the top. If you want all the way straight down to where it says green space, we would, we would, we could definitely put it there, right where that hand is almost. Um, so that would alleviate the fact that we would need a variance for the dumpster. Um, the four sheds, if you want to scroll this up so we can see the top portion of this. Thank you. I think it's Kim, right? Thank you. You'll see that you'll see the sheds if you go just a little
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, they are.
There's four. Well, there's the three that are very close together.
Mm hmm.
And then there's just the corner of this one over to the right. Well, obviously, those sheds aren't, aren't the the property owner of forty six foot doesn't own those sheds. Uh, they're from the residences. There's two residents. You'll see a dwelling on the top, two of them. So how many ever years ago, who knows? They put those sheds there and without permission, they've been there. They could be there for many years. I really don't know. Um, they're buffered so because we can't see them because there's a huge tree line, as you see there, that buffers all of that. Uh, in fact, that one dwelling that you're looking at right there, I think that's number two. That is within the commercial office residential zoning district. So that building itself is in a commercial zoning district, even though it's a residence. But, um, in any event, that's something that I I talked to Don Delude about. Jeez, I mean, how are how are we going for variances for sheds when they have nothing to do with our project? But, uh, it's important, you know, that we have this discussion. Do we tell the owner of forty six has no problem with their being there in the sheds? If he wants to do something permissioned writing? But I guess we might get some direction from the board. Um, so basically, they topography, this land is is very flat. Um, next to the south of this is another parcel of land that's owned by a billboard company. Um, so I have a little bit of a photo here that shows the billboard right here. So there's a vacant lane. So you'll see it on the survey where it says benchmark with big arrow. That that's a big billboard right there now. And if you, it doesn't show on this survey, but if you go down further, the owner of forty six, also his daughter, Colleen, owns the beauty salon. So they've had this property for many, many years. I mean, I believe they said over twenty years. And I'm sure you, uh, this this also photo shows the corner of Cherry Street. And, uh, which is right here. That's the street where the sheds are. There's a house, uh, right here. I'm sorry, right here. This is Cherry Street right here. That's the house with the circle that the sheds belong to, the three sheds. You can see the buffer from Cherry Street over to where we want to, where our lot is. And along Fuller, you know, these are typical things, what are which are our neighbors, the gas station, uh, the diner across the street, and the combination retail store on the corner of Cherry, on the corner of Cherry. So I'm sure many of board members are familiar with Fuller Road. It's a very highly traffic corridor, commercial corridor. And we'd just like to, um, see if we can develop a building there to get some use out of that site, even though, you know, you can only use twenty percent of it.
No, thank you, Ted. Kirk, any questions?
Um, I, I don't know if you can reveal. I I just curious, uh, what what kind of a fast food store would be there?
Well, currently, right now, we have no tentative tenants. Um, but Mike, the owner was saying that he would like the opportunity to maybe have a little store in there if that was feasible, like a coffee shop. Uh, nothing like a restaurant or anything at that level that we don't think there's going to be an interest in that, especially with what's happening with COVID and and, uh, everything around us. So, uh, but he wanted that opportunity that maybe someone wanted to get a cup of coffee or maybe an ice cream or maybe Danish's or something like that. That that's kind of what his mindset was.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Tracy? Tracy, you're
There we go.
We'll get used to that. There you go.
Sorry, I don't have any questions right now. I'd I'd like to see if there is anyone from, um, the public that had anything to say.
There is.
Okay.
There is. David?
I have no questions. Um, no, nothing.
Mary?
No questions yet.
Nick?
No questions. I'll defer to audiences well, Jim.
Okay. You know, just if I remember correctly, Building Department, I think we we gave a variance for that billboard many, many years ago, I think. For that billboard there. Because wasn't that one of the first electronic billboards in the capital district?
That was a, that was one of the, uh,
Early ones, wasn't it?
Uh, there are two. There's one on Fuller and there's one on Loudon Road. That was one of the pilot billboards, digital billboards, yes.
Yeah, I do remember that, so. Okay, I guess can we have someone in the audience that wants to comment?
His name is Michael. Michael, are you ready?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your patience, Michael.
Yeah, thanks. The name is Michael Vigale, uh, we have from three Spruce Street. That's the street, uh, right around the corner from Fuller Road. And a question about, uh, dumpster location. Um, if it move to the other side, that could potentially uh, create a smell depending on the wind. If it uh, was on that, on the other side, so that might be a problem.
So Ted, right now the dumpster location is closer to Cherry than Spruce, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we're, we're closer to that location. We're asking where the variance is, uh, we're asking for the variance, which ideally um, you know, it could definitely be moved to the, to the south side, um, which would be yes, it would be closer to uh, this gentleman's uh, property, um, which is
Free Spruce.
A hundred foot, about a hundred foot closer to Spruce. But actually, um, I believe we're, I mean, we're at least, I don't know, five hundred feet and we're a good distance away from this gentleman's house on Spruce, maybe further.
But as you're proposing it now, you're gonna leave it where it's proposed to be?
Yes, I mean, I, I mean, if we could get the variance, we would, I, I would say that my customer, the owner would say, let's go with it, but um, i- if in the planning stages, I mean, again, we went, you know, just for a sketch plan. So we may get like feedback from the board to say, you know, we want a couple of different things. And uh, as long as we moved it to a area that was permitted by zoning, then I think we can do that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike, if you have anything else.
Um, yeah, then just a question. What is exactly the stormwater management area? What does that look like?
That is basically an area that's going to retain uh, the runoff from uh, like the parking lot, if you will, or the roof leaders, the drains off the roof. That again has to be an area that's staging area uh, to hold a volume safely. It's basically like a hundred year storm. If we get such a great volume of rain, it, it will go in there as a retention area. And then it will reach into the town and then distribute into uh, I believe we're, we're allowed to put the water, I believe, into the uh, stormwater, excuse me, into the water course area. Again, that's just the design, initial design from the uh, drainage engineer. It doesn't mean that it's definitely going to be there, um, because we're in front of the zoning board now, which that's more of a planning board issue, sir. So if we get through the zoning, uh, this will have public meetings, many public meetings for a, a planning board, which you could come and comment about the things that basically you're asking about.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's about it. Um, other than maybe uh, the, the green space, I see a green space on the south side or the bottom uh, of the drawing. Uh, what
In the right area.
Does that contain the, the green space? What is that actually?
Well, generally right now that's just grass. I mean, again, we're, we're in such the preliminary stages. We're gonna have to show uh, landscaping, shrubbery, uh, perennials, uh, like a trees and things of that nature. But right now it's, we're so early stages. Again, we're in front of the zoning board. So the zoning board doesn't discuss these type of things. The planning board will address that and that's what I would encourage you to come for that. If we get through the variance, you'll be postings and notices when we get from the planning board.
Okay, so basically the decision on where the dumpster will be will come at a later time. Is that right?
No, I think we're just asking for it to be where it is tonight. Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Board members, anything else to add to this or comments, observations?
I have a question.
Yes, Mary?
We have an idea. Do you have any idea when they will know? You know, they'll have more certainty as to what they'd like to put into this building?
Uh, for tenant spaces, for tenants? Um, I wish I had an answer for you, Mary, on that. I don't. Uh, usually, usually you don't want to go too far forward with a project and do what they call a vanilla box. Let's build the building, but let's not really have a tenant yet because the design of the building has a lot to say who's gonna be in it. Um, but you know, again, we had to start somewhere. Uh, he wasn't sure even if we could, how big of a building we could put on this site because of so many restrictions, you know? So um, but that is something that we'll have to address, I think, with the building department before we even get to the planning board.
Ted, Ted, you know, I'm reminded about all the concern over the stewards across the street when that was going in
Right.
and the like. And generally, uh, when single family residential areas find out there's fast food going in, they are very concerned about the paper, the litter, the smells, the hours of operation. Does your client, would your client object to the, us not addressing the fast food variance at this time and just deal with the sheds and the dumpster? I, I mean, because, but either way, I think you gotta come back to the zoning board for fast food, either way. And, but I'm just, you know, picking a poke on fast food could be anything.
Well, you're right. You're, you're right uh, with that regard, but I mean, um, I'm just asking this question. If we're talking about a fast food because of the buffer setback, why would we have to come back to the zoning board if we can, if we're looking for that variance tonight? Does that have to be more specific?
Well, I'm suggesting, well, I'm, that's why I'm, I'm looking at this two ways and I will defer to counsel on maybe a better interpretation in my interpretation. But I mean, I, I just, I don't remember us ever approving a fast food operation without knowing exactly what it's gonna be, whether it's a pizza shop or a donut shop or, I mean, Subway is right across the street on Cherry Street, that on, uh, right, right on Cherry. There's a Subway shop there. I mean, what are the, you know, how, fast food saturation? It's not like maybe they, a nail salon, fine, put another nail salon in, but uh,
Right. Well, that's the business she's in. She's done a business. She already owns the place.
That's right. She owns the, the beauty.
Which is the nail salon, hair salon. But uh, I think honestly, when we were scratching the surface, Jim was like, you know, could, could I put like, you know, a little coffee place in there or something like that? I said, well, we would have to show that to the town as part of the proposal. And we were denied due to the buffer. If it's not specific enough.
Yeah, no. Yeah, but I'm not saying, but I'm not saying, you know, if you had to come back, I'm not saying we wouldn't approve, prove it either. But I mean, Don, I have a question for the building. Does a bakery constitute, since Ted likes Danish, does a bakery constitute a fast food establishment?
Does it look like I like Danish?
Falls under the same definition.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just throw that out for conversation, folks. I mean, you're, I'm only one person on the board and I don't want to be influential on this. I just wanted the folks to consider the, the, what, what, what our options are as the board approving a series of variants. Because I understand there's basically three variances in front of us right now, the shed, the dumpster and the two hundred foot. Is that correct? Yes?
You think so?
No? Yes, Don says yes.
If, if you, if you take away the food service component, then the two hundred foot setback requirement goes away.
Correct.
So you could build a building, you know, there's no requirement for a two hundred foot setback for a commercial building, like you, you recommended um, for nail salon, office building, stuff like that, but.
Well, a tax attorney can still rent space there if they want to.
They could. Fast food is what, the two hundred foot.
Right. So that, that's my point. I just wanted to remind everyone that the two hundred foot is directly aligned with the fast food establishment, not other commercial aspects within the building.
So
Yes, Michael.
Uh, I just want to comment on the shed is a little bit if I can. There, there are obviously neighbor encroachments on uh, the property situation. The uh, the property owner certainly it was, is within his rights. You don't establish them in that domain with a shed. Uh, he's, he's able to uh, you know, direct them to remove the encroachments. If that's what he wishes to do. The, if he wishes to leave them there, uh, that's also up to him. They're, they're, you know, incidental structure frankly, and the, the tree buffer is huge uh, there. You don't see those. I, my comment, my thoughts on the dumpster location is it's, it's in the, probably the, the best spot. But you know, typically we, we historically have had a reluctance to approve applications that are spec, speculative. We don't know what the final use situation would be here. Uh, he's opening the door for fast food, but it could end up to be an office building or uh, some other type of uh, use situation. So the, I have no problem with the dumpster locale. I have no problem with the, the shed staying or going. That's up to the, the owner. It doesn't really impact this development uh, situation uh, at this time. But, but you know, generally we, we like to have a, a, a solid idea of what's gonna happen uh, before uh, we make the approval. So the uh, and, and fast food, I, I don't really have a great problem with the situation. I think maybe our expansion of our, of the definitions and our, uh, what constitutes fast food or whatever. The uh, a small coffee shop is, is one thing versus a larger uh, Burger King drive through or whatever you want to talk to about at that time. The uh, but it's really up to the board what you want to do, but the speculative nature of the application is without knowing exactly what the final use situation gonna be, it gives me a little trouble.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Well, I, if the board is reluctant to discuss that issue, uh, because it is vague, um, perhaps uh, I would ask the board for an adjournment to convene with my client to say, you know, are, do you want to really attack this at this point and be more specific? Say, even though we don't have a viable tenant, but we could say, look, we like the coffee shop there. And then I could, we could bring that proposal back to the board and they, they could uh, act on that request.
And well, I think we could, Teddy, I think, you know, we can certainly approve the dumpster locale where you have it for tonight. Okay? The uh, the shed thing to me is a non-issue. That's up to your client, what, what he wants to do with those folks. Okay? The uh, I don't know that they'll be entering into a lease agreement to uh, with the neighbors over there for the shed. But uh, in my mind, you know, I don't really have a problem with the fast food, but uh, the problem is the unknown, what's gonna happen with the development. Typically, the board likes to get their arms around what the nature of the occupancy is gonna be, you know, so. But it's up to the board, obviously, what they want to do, but my thought is to approve the variances and they skip the, the two hundred setback. Let's see what you get for a tenant situation. If you have a spec tenant coming in, what's the plan? Are you gonna build the building regardless of uh, tenancy or are you gonna wait to get a tenant?
No, the building is gonna be built with or without a tenant.
Okay, so it'll be a spec property situation at that time. The uh, well, if, if you're gonna, most of these fast food joints will want a drive through window. Okay, the uh,
Yeah, that would be, that's not feasible. We, we were talking, we're talking about just foot traffic, um, you know, Mr. Gary, just, you know, someone coming in, want to grab a coffee or maybe have a, so uh, it wouldn't be.
Now, I, A small restaurant, obviously, you know, the fifteen hundred feet, two thousand square feet of the, of the structure even is uh, is not gonna be that uh, much of a odor producer or whatever, particularly when it's incorporated in the front part of, of the structure over there. So, and the dumpster being and probably the, the furthest away from all of the neighbors uh, location, I think it makes sense to put it there. So the uh, but it's up to the board what they want to do, but my thought is to approve, prove your dumpster locale and not worry about the, the shed issue. And when you're got a specific, uh, if you do end up with a specific tenant, the uh, but you won't even have to come back to see us if you don't get into the fast food uh, situation.
I understand. Well, I, I, I have latitude, you know, to make that decision. Uh, so I mean, it took forever to get to where we got today, not, not because of the board, because of so much planning what involved in this project. So uh, probably to keep the ball rolling, maybe we'll just discuss the variances that we need tonight for, as you said, and uh, forego the fast food and then we, we can get moving forward. And if we do get a fast food client, then we'll be back to visit you again.
I think that works.
Do I see some nodding heads?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll
Yes, Kirk.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the dumpster and uh, and the shed, if I understand correct, these two issue.
Don, is that correct? In other words, we want to approve the variance requested, but for the fast food, the two hundred foot.
Yeah, so, so your condition is that the fast food, if there's, if there's a proposal for a fast food, obviously a new zoning verification will be submitted by Mr. DeLucia. Um, if that were the case, then it would be back, back in front of the zoning board.
Great.
All right, so that's the condition. So yeah, so then you're looking for a leaf on the other, the other items. So
Okay.
It's in, in the dumpster location.
Okay, Kirk, right? That's what you wanted?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Nick, okay. I saw Nick's finger first.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? We'll move then to a vote. Nick?
With the motion.
Thank you. Uh, member Nardalelo?
With the motion.
Thank you. Member Rosenthal?
With the motion.
Thank you, member Swanson.
The motion.
Thank you, member Hong.
With the motion.
Thank you. And the chair votes with the motion. It's hereby unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, stay up there, everybody.
Ted, but wait, before you go, I just wanted to, since your nut wood was an unlisted seeker action. Approval by this board, is there a motion to um, approve the seeker as, as recommended? Mary makes the motion seconded by Tracy. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, hearing none, it is hereby approved. And that'll be filed tomorrow, hopefully with the town.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Our last item of business is twenty one fifty five Central Avenue. Take notice, the Town and Colony Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a televised hearing on the third of February twenty twenty one at seven PM to hear the appeal of Charlotte Carson from the decision of the Building Department Manager of the Town and Colony denying her building permit for the premises located at twenty one fifty five Central Avenue, the construction of a one thousand seven hundred and eighty foot square foot accessory structure garage in a commercial office residential zoning district with a ten foot by eight point eight foot side yard setback and a five point two foot rear yard setback does not comply with the minimum ten foot slash fifteen foot side yard setbacks and a fifteen foot rear yard setback as stated in the Town and Colony Land Use Law, Article Six, Section one ninety dash twenty four, ninety dash twenty five and one ninety, attachment number two dimensional table. Upon the request for a variance from the provisions of the Code of the Town and Colony, Chapter one ninety, to permit such construction and use and a secret determination for such appeal. To protect public safety during the state of emergency, this public hearing will be, take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman. And members of the public wishing to listen and view this, please refer to the town's YouTube channel. The notification of publication is duly noted and there's no further seeker action required at this time. Uh, is Charlotte here?
Yes.
Good evening, Charlotte. Want to just give us a quick overview as to what you're seeking from the board tonight?
Well, I, the, the contractor's off a foot and two inches on one side. And I'd like it to pass.
So in other words, Carla, this garage is currently under construction?
Oh, it's there. It's done. And he's a foot, it, it's eight point eight inches on, or on the one side. It should have been ten. He was a little, he's a little close to the property line.
Okay, that's pretty obvious, I think. Do members of the board have any questions on this for clarification from the building department?
You know what? I would like a little clarification because when I went by there and I didn't realize it was just a modification of a building that was already constructed. I was thinking this was going to be another building. And I couldn't understand where there was possible room for this because there's so much. So if somebody from the building department can
Explain what happened?
Explain it, yes.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mary. That's the same feeling I had when I drove by there. Twice. I had to look at it twice. Am I miss, missing something? Don, you just want to give us a quick summary as to what happened?
So this, this proposal came in front of you folks back in twenty nineteen. Um, and at the time, um, there was a consultant by the name of Bob Cordell, who presented the proposed accessory structure of, of the garage. And at that time, it was because the accessory structure did not meet the side yard setbacks. Um, it was ten and ten where ten and fifteen are required. And it also did not meet the rear yard setback. It had fifteen. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. It had five foot, four inches and fifteen is required. So it, it was granted. She obtained a building permit to build the structure. In the course of building the structure, the foundation was put in incorrect location as, as um, Charlotte, Ms. Ms. Carson had made. Charlotte, Ms. Ms. Carson had mentioned. The uh, foundation was put too close to the side yard. So instead of ten feet, which what was granted. It was eight feet, eight, eight point eight feet. So when you grant a variance on a on a structure. And when there's a specific dimensional, because it's an area variance, so when you when you grant a variance, it means it has to be. Built and located to to what you granted the variance for. Um, so in this case. They weren't compliant with what was granted. They were off. So when that takes place, and and even more so, it's it's closer to the property line as opposed to further away, so. Even more so does she need to come back in front of you to get relief on that discrepancy. Um, essentially, she's in violation of her 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 initially approved. Variance, so in order for her to proceed with being able to occupy the structure. Um. She would have to get that. Relief from you now for that discrepancy.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? From the board? Any on the, anyone from the public still with us? Counsel?
Well, we looked at this and have discussed it. Obviously, it's a contractor error, the uh, when they cited it, you know? Typically, of course, the uh. A foundation location would have to be submitted uh, by the surveyor uh, in the matter. The uh, I don't know what happened there, but uh, the relief requested, I think, is de minimis. The it's kind of a unique uh, property. The uh, I believe the applicant lives in the in the house in the front. The uh, and then the motel, of course, is part of the business, but. The garage is to be exclusively used, I believe, for the car collection of the owner?
Correct.
Okay, so it it's not gonna emanate any more noise or whatever. It's just a a parking facility. You're not gonna do uh, repairs or rebuilds in that garage?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, well, to me, the the error here was not really the applicant. It was the applicant's contractor who didn't cite the uh, the building correctly. The relief is de minimis, and I have no problem with the requested relief.
Thank you, Michael. Any other board members want to comment or offer observations on this one? No? Hearing none? Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance as requested.
Okay, Kirk make a motion then.
Kirk makes the motion seconded by. Mary has the second on it. Okay, thank you. We'll move to a vote then. Member Vigiani?
With the motion.
Member Nardalelo, thank you.
With the motion.
Member Rosenthal?
With the motion.
Thank you, member Swanson.
With the motion.
Member Hong?
With the motion.
Thank you. And the chair votes with the motion. It's hereby unanimously approved. Ms. Carson, good luck. I hope you'll be able to open your garage door now.
Oh, thank you.
Any further business to come before the board tonight?
I just like to tell Kim that I want to vote with the minutes. I missed the very beginning. I'm in favor of the minutes for the last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
And and thank you again for patience tonight. I know. We had a tough one, but I think it went pretty smoothly, all things considered, and it was interesting how the public just has adapted to this kind of a format. Which is surprising even to myself, so. We do have a meeting. Pardon?
You did a great job, Joe.
Thank you, thank you. We do have a meeting, and Kim, Kim did all the work.
And Kim too.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. We have a meeting again a week from tonight with a four person, a four item agenda. Hopefully not as controversial as tonight's. So we'll entertain a motion to hereby adjourn. David Rosenthal makes it. And then uh, who seconded it? Nick, Nick seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're hereby adjourned. Thank you, and Kim, thank you so much.